November 1st, 2023 study meeting of the Levonia City Council. We're going to start tonight's meeting with the offering of the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. McCullough. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Tonight's meeting will set the agenda for the 1,981st regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting and will take place on Monday, November 13th. That's where all of tonight's items will be officially voted on. You might hear various motions offered tonight. Those items will carry through and may or may not be offered at the next regular meeting unless there is a motion to put something on the consent agenda, which means it will be voted on together with other items on the consent agenda. At this time, the council has set aside up to 30 minutes to hear from the public in regards to any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody who would like to address the council at this time? I see none. We will close public comments. We'll go to the council. Is there any council announcements? I see none. We'll hop right into business here. Item number one of new business is a site plan petition from the Planning Commission for petition 2023-090807 submitted by Sauvay Homes requesting to develop a site condominium back boxes estates consisting of five single family homes on the properties at 36143, 36155, and 36167 Parkdale Avenue on the south side of Parkdale between Arthur and Levan in the northeast quarter of Section 32. It says here that Mr. Duggan will be representing Sauvay Homes. Is Mr. Duggan here?
Yeah.
Mr. Duggan, come on up to the podium. Mr. Toramina, are you going to get us started here?
I will, and unfortunately, I do not have visuals for you this evening. This is a petition for a site plan for residential development. This property is located at the corner of Parkdale Avenue and Levan Road. The zoning of the property is N1 neighborhood. N1 requires minimum lot size of 50 feet in width by 120 feet in depth. This property has roughly 270 feet of frontage along Parkdale. Its depth is 120 feet. Total lot area is 32,270 square feet. The plan would divide the property into five home sites. Four of the home sites, units two through five, would each measure 52 feet by 120 feet, meeting the minimum requirements for the N1 district. Then the westernmost unit, which is adjacent to Levan, would measure 60.91 feet by 120 feet. So that lot is a little bit larger. One of the requirements here is to obtain additional right-of-way for Levan Road. That is an 86-foot wide right-of-way on the future land use plan. So this development would dedicate an additional, I believe, 33 feet along the east side of that right-of-way for additional right-of-way to meet that requirement. The site is surrounded by single-family residential homes that are all zoned N1 and RUF, and then further to the west is the Middle Rouge Parkway, which is public land. As I indicated, the plan does meet all of the N1 district requirements. I'll point out that this site was formerly, previously zoned R1. It was in 2017 that the council reviewed a petition involving this property for four detached, single-family homes. That plan was never developed. Since then, the zoning changed to N1, changing the requirements from 60 feet in width to 50 feet in width, and that's the reason why the plan went from a five-lot design to a four-lot design. Planning Commission is recommending approval of the plan as submitted.
Thank you. Mr. Duggan, tell me your name and address, please.
Mr. Duggan, no. Brian Duggan, 14315, Danny Levonia, Michigan, 48154.
I'm tempted to answer in a completely different way, but is there anybody from council who has any questions to get us up? Sir, here.
I do.
Ms. Toy.
Thank you. Mr. Duggan, could you tell me, where is this around? What mile roads? I'm trying to envision it.
It's south of Plymouth on the east side of Levan, about two, three blocks in south of Plymouth.
Dead end section back there, then?
Yes. It's almost that, if you go straight, you're going to hit the dead end in the Hines Park.
Okay, because there's a party store right there.
Yes, I believe so.
Yep. All righty. And then what are you building? Brick?
We're going to do, after Mr. Councilman Donovan requests, we're going to do brick all four sides to the belt line. Mr. Toramina asked us to make it, we first came in at 50, 40, he asked us to make it 52. So we compromised. We went to the 52 for the Planning Commission. We will do full brick all the way up on every house on the belt line, which will be the first floor.
In square footage with them?
Anywhere between 1,400 to 1,900, depending on the ranch or colonial.
And cost?
Cost?
Cost. Not your cost, but what are you selling it for?
We're selling it for a lot less than our cost. Hopefully, somewhere in the $3,000 to $4,000 price range.
And, um, are you, you're listing them, or?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, you are? Okay.
So the Number One Real Estate Asia in Michigan, United States, and North Korea will be listing them. I picked North Korea up last week.
You got that title after being on the city council? That's pretty good.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask for an approving on consent. These look very nice. I like the brick. Thanks to Mr. Donovan. And you build a great house, and much success to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Duggan, for being here this evening. Yeah, after reviewing some of the minutes from the Planning Commission, there was some substantial conversation about more brick on the first floor. And thank you, Mr. Duggan, and Sauvay Homes Inc. I had spoken to you, and you guys were amenable to that. I think it's just a better quality and standard that we want in Levonia. And you guys do amazing homes, and I do think this will be a great addition to this vacant piece of property that's been sitting there forever. And five new homes in a neighborhood right there will make a lot of sense. So I'm in support of this petition. Thank you, Mr. President.
So, Mr. Toramina, is there a monument marker for this condominium development?
One is not shown on the plans, and I'm not aware that they have any intention of putting one out there. I guess that's a question for the petitioner.
Mr. Duggan, do you plan on putting a monument with the name of the condominium association?
According to the last Planning Commission, they said we didn't have to, so I didn't see.
Yeah, I don't want you to.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to. Even though that the condo is, by the way, named after Michael's dog, no, we won't, we won't blow one up.
Yeah, sometimes information's too much.
It's been a long time since I've been up here. Give me some time to talk.
I'll run the meeting, so thank you. The reason why I point out not wanting a monument is because I think they look kind of out of place, particularly in situations like this where these essentially will look like single-family homes in a neighborhood. I think it would draw more attention to it kind of sticking out a little bit. So whenever, from my opinion, if we can avoid putting up monument signs, I think that's usually the best call. So anyways, you have an approving on consent. Mr. Barr?
I have a couple of questions myself, if I may.
Go for it.
First of all, I appreciate Mr. Jowey bringing up the monument question. I concur. I just want to double-check. The reason that's an issue is because I was under the impression that somewhere in our ordinance it required it for these types of things. Do we need to include something in the resolution that that's not required, or do we not have to? I don't know what the, see, Paul's shaking his head.
I don't believe we do. It's on all the plans that there's not one there.
Okay.
And we usually rely upon the plans.
And then either Mr. Duggan or Mr. Toramina, one of you might know the answer to this. The space between the houses, 14 feet, how does that compare to the space across the street between the houses and the existing homes?
I believe they're 14 feet, too. I can't remember who walked it, Mark, but somebody from the Planning Commission measured it out and told us it was 14 feet.
Okay. And the lot sizes across the street, I assume, are 60 feet?
They are.
Okay. And then, Mr. Duggan, was it, I don't recall, was it you that was here with the previous proposal?
Yes.
And what, what happened with that? Was that just a COVID casualty, or was that, actually, that wasn't?
That was back in 17, so part of that was, was that, and I think they were working out the logistics of the storm sewers and the costs and everything, so.
Okay. And we approved something back then?
I thought it was all approved, yes, but I found out really it was not, so.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Toramina, just a general question. This is kind of one of the unique situations where you have an RUF, you've got N1. When we were going through, I know you guys spent a lot of time when we were updating the zoning, just conforming, obviously, across the street. Obviously, I think it's a great plan. You're putting the new homes in in a vacant lot. I have no issues with it. The petitioner followed all the rules, so I have no issues with this as it sits. But going forward, I mean, do we have any leverage to try to conform, I mean, across the street? I mean, these would be, these would fit in perfectly if they were 60-foot lots. They would. They're going to be, obviously, a little bit smaller, and they're going to be on top of each other a little bit. Do we have any, anything in place that could help us in a case like this going forward, or no?
That's a discussion that I think we would need to have to see how the ordinance might be able to.
I mean, just to give flexibility, the developer followed all the rules. It's a great plan. It's a dilapidated area that hasn't been developed on, so I applaud that. It's just, it'd be nice to be able to have some kind of leverage to say, hey, you know, across the street has this, but then right across the street on the other side is RUF, so it could have different sizes. I guess it's just more of an, you know, planning, housekeeping, just a general thought. Thank you.
It's a standard of compatibility that, you know, could be put in the ordinance. We'd have to take a look at, you know, how that language could be crafted and how it would be applied in situations like this. I don't believe, but the language does not exist currently, so.
Mr. Barr?
So if you sense some of my hesitation, my questions, Mr. McCullough actually went the direction that I was, I was thinking and just debating in my mind. And I feel like we just had this identical conversation recently. And so I'm going to ask the same question I asked before, because maybe I remember it wrong. The zoning ordinance dictates a minimum. It doesn't keep council from saying, we want for this particular development it to be this, does it? I mean, we've done that before. I can think of one neighborhood that I know we did that, where we specified for a certain section that the widths would be higher than what the?
Most of the times it's been done, to my memory, has been with the agreement of the developer. And I hesitate to give an opinion as to any other development. All I will say is this fits the requirements of the ordinance.
Understood.
And I don't, for other developments that may or may not be planned in the future, I don't want to really give an opinion on whether or not. But bottom line is, the other developments, my memory is that that was always agreements between the developers and council, and everybody agreed to it.
And the particular development that I have in mind is the, I forget what it's called, but it's the site of the former Clay Elementary. And what I do remember is that the houses that were up against the existing neighborhood that we asked, we include in the resolution that the lot widths would match the existing houses. And the houses across the street, we allowed them to be tighter. But, but up against the existing neighborhood, we wanted them to match, which is exactly the situation here, what I think Mr. McCullough is suggesting. So, like, I like this plan, but because it's in an existing neighborhood, Mr. McCullough is exactly right. We could do 60-foot widths. Yeah, that would, I'm sure, mean only four houses instead of five, but that's why I was interested about that previous plan that we approved, that apparently was acceptable to developers. So we know that they were looking at doing four before. Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask that this be left on regular, because I want more time to think about that particular issue. I like the plan, but packing these in there like that in existing neighborhood, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with.
Thank you. Mr. Toramina?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I'd like to point out an important distinction between the project that you're referring to and this one. That was developed under the single-family clustering requirements, where there is specific language in the ordinance that requires compatibility wherever a cluster development is immediately adjacent to abutting an existing single-family subdivision that is of conventional standards. So in that particular case, the ordinance did require the wider lots adjacent to that existing subdivision. That differs here, where it's not a PRD or a cluster development. It's a conventional development.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate that, Mr. Toramina, and maybe, maybe that's the distinction we need. I guess, going into the next meeting, I've asked it be on regular. I would appreciate if law could just let us know, if, to Mr. McCullough's question, if we can, with the way this is zoned, specify a wider width.
I will.
So if we can have that information, that'll help in two weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Toramina, in your, in your presentation, 50-foot lots are permitted. That is what the zoning permits here, correct?
That is correct.
And if it was not, the next up would be 60-foot lots, but that's not zoned for 60-foot lots?
No, the next zoning classification is N2, which requires a minimum of 70 feet.
70. And that's where I'm going with this. If the standard is 50 feet for this zoning, then that's what the standard is. Anything above that is determined by the reality of the developed site itself. If the developer says, I can do 68 feet, but my minimum is only 50 feet, that's up to the developer itself. I get frustrated when council wants to start increasing lot sizes. If we want to do that, we should rezone it to a different zoning classification. If the zoning here is for 50-foot lots, and the petitioner is giving us exactly what we, as a government, have dictated for this site, I would be worrisome of a council to start telling people they can't do that, because we gave them a standard, they follow the standard, and then in, in the fourth quarter, we want to change it all of a sudden because we don't like it. If we don't like the zoning for that area, we should change that zoning, because people spend all this money to try to develop a site and go through all the engineering standards to the standards that the city has set forth, and then city council says, no, we actually didn't mean that. We didn't mean 50-foot lots, even though that's what it's zoned for. We meant it to be 60 or 65. So I understand why it would be compatible. My opinion is that you really have a hard time visually seeing the difference between 60 and 50-foot lots, or in this case, there's a difference of eight feet from, from 52-foot lots to 60-foot lots. I think visually, you have a difficult time noticing that to the naked eye. But again, my problem is, if council wants to change the zoning standards, I'm okay with changing the zoning standards in areas. I think we did that last year. We changed our zoning. I think when this was approved initially, a couple of years ago, there was a different zoning standard then. And then after we redid the zoning in our city, now there's a new zoning which allows for 50-foot lots. So if city council wants to start changing the zoning requirements across the city again, that's a great discussion. We should do that. But I think we should do that before we want to start mandating differences at city council when the petitioners come before us and give us exactly what the law prescribes them to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Morgan and then Mr. Barr. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, Mr. Toramina, I have a quick question about this regarding off Levan Road there. I've noticed that it looks like 33 feet east of Levan Road. What's going on with that? Is, was that taken by the city as an easement of some type that was removed from the owner's property, or can you explain what that 33 feet is that was reduced?
This 33 feet is being dedicated to the public for road purposes. So the unique, and let me go back to this aerial photograph, because this really gives you a better idea. Right, right now, there's an easement by prescription for travel purposes across the property. You can see the traveled portion of the road actually extends onto a portion of this property, which is generally described to the centerline of that, of that roadway. This is not uncommon, where we have circumstances like this, and we have an opportunity to get the dedication. We work with the developers to provide that additional right-of-way, and that's what's being done in this case. Additional 33 feet along the, along the western edge of the property will be dedicated for public road purposes.
So I guess my question is, is that the developer gave that up willingly so he could fit these lots in here, and that reduced it to the 50 feet, basically, per piece of property? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Or he would have been able to widen those lots if he wanted to do that, but it was an agreement between the city and him?
Yeah, so the, well, yeah, the ordinance would not recognize that portion of the land for development purposes or for lot size requirements. So it's really, it's something that landowners willingly do, especially as part of these developments. It's property that can't be used for any other purpose other than public right-of-way. So, but yes, it's 33 feet off, off this property that will be used for that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So the first time we reviewed the site, this meeting was a little bit more interesting because we got the history of the property. And the houses there to the south, who formerly owned the property that we're talking about right now, had been in the same family's hands for, I think, at least 100 years, and they own the surrounding neighborhood as well. So little by little, the neighborhood that was once their land became the neighborhood. And I think that's worth noting, and that's probably why the street's there, because it was a private access to the property. Right?
Yes. I don't know the full history, but you're right. The land area that you see here, highlighted in yellow, was part of the property to the south. It was in 2015 that this property was effectively split in half, and they retained the parcel to the south. You can see that situation still exists with the Levan Road. It does serve another house or two further to the, to the south. But again, that's, that's across, basically, an easement on those properties by prescription.
And we don't have to beat this, but I think those two houses are both owned by the same family.
That could be. I don't know that.
Mr. Barr?
Just, this is deja vu all over again, because we did just have this conversation recently. But to Mr. Donovan's comments, you know, just, I take a little bit of issue with implying that council is trying to overstep something here. I mean, we have a council, we have a zoning designation that says 50-foot minimum, doesn't require 50 feet, requires 50-foot minimum. And the next possible zoning classification is 70-foot. And so if you want to do a plan where council for various compatibility of the neighborhood or whatever wants to do 60 feet, this is, there is not another zoning and classification for this to go to. This is it. And I think that's part of the job of council, is to be, it's why these things come before us, is to see if a development makes sense. And one of those things we look at is compatibility with the neighborhood. But again, that's why, Mr. Bernie, it's going to be so important to have that legal opinion, so that we don't have to keep having this conversation every time this comes up. So, thanks.
Thank you. So we have, yes, Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out, in the packet that council has, the packet says 50-foot lots, and they're supposed to be 52. So the, so just in case there's any cure infusion there, they're 52 and not 50. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. If there's nothing further from council, is there any comment from the audience on item number one? We, at this point, we have an approving for the regular agenda, and we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Duggan.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a couple of questions?
You can ask.
I know you got approving, but I'm throwing on my old hat when I used to sit over there. I never heard that the, the property that is owned by somebody can't be used as their property. You're saying that that little sliver was a right-of-way, and I-
Yeah, I think that's a topic.
Just something I think that I would like to know.
You can follow through with Mr. Toramina. He can give you a history lesson. I mean, I just, at this point, I don't want to belabor the issue, and it doesn't matter for our purposes here tonight.
Okay. I'm just saying, if we use that property, then now we're at 59 feet.
I know. But that's not what the proposal is, so let's not go there at the moment. Thank you, Mr. Duggan.
Thank you.
Item number two is a request to waive the formal bidding process and award a contract from the city clerk to provide an annual financial statement audit for a period of five years, ending November 30th of 2027 from budgeted funds. It says from the clerk, but I presume I would go to Mr. Slater first. Is that correct, or?
Yes. It's sent through the clerk's office, but it's the finance department, along with the clerk.
Okay. So we'll go to Mr. Slater?
Good evening, council. Yes, it comes technically from the clerk's office. As by city charter, the clerk is the auditor of the records for the city. But this comes before you after discussion between the clerk's office, my office, and the mayor's office, and then representatives of Plant Moran, who is the firm that we are recommending to provide our annual audits for the next five years. Plant Moran has been our auditor for a number of years now, and they've submitted a proposal, which is included in your packet, with some cost increases over what we've paid before, and the rationale as to why those increases are needed. The biggest being, well, two, two biggest being, one, we've been receiving a significant discount to market rates for quite a time now. Plant Moran has been very accommodating to, and this, a lot of this came out of the financial crisis when times were tough, and they actually reduced their fees back then, and they've never adjusted back to market rates. In fact, the gap has only widened because they've given us small increases since then. The second biggest factor is the number of new pronouncements and the complexity of what it takes to produce our financial statements and audit our books. It's increased substantially over the years. So the audit report that they produce now and the number of procedures they know they have to go through to issuing an opinion on the, on that report is substantially more than what it has been in the past. So with that, we are recommending Plant Moran be retained as the city auditor for the next five years. There are representatives from Plant Moran here tonight to answer any other questions you might have on this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you had any either.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Well, real quick, Plant Moran, would you like to address this at all, right off the bat? Good evening. Your name, please?
Good evening. Hi, I'm Stacy Reeves, and I'm the engagement partner for the financial statement audit. With me tonight are Keith Tumansky, who's the senior manager on the engagement, as well as Frank Audia, who was the engagement partner prior to me. We are here tonight to address any questions that you might have on the proposal, and do appreciate the opportunity to meet with you today as you consider this.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here, and I'm going to go to Ms. Toy.
Thank you. I've served on this council for a number of years, and we, years back, we did have someone for doing that. And one of our large jobs, as you know, as a council, is the budget and the financials for the city. You guys have done an outstanding job. There's never been a question. You've always called. I know when I was president of council, I'm sure Jim has had the same thing during audits, or Councilwoman McIntyre when she was president. You've always been friendly. You've outreach. You've answered questions immediately, and you've given us great suggestions over the years. And I can't say enough good things about what you've done for this community. And I think that's part of the reason we're so solvent and do so well, is by folks like you that give us good advice. And I hope you're not increasing any of your costs or fees because of Mr. Slater not going to be maybe with us next year. He made it look so easy all these years, so.
Bar denial.
I know. And that, I'm just joking with you. But in all seriousness, I, I just want to compliment you for the outstanding job you've done for the many years I've been here. And I, you know, not to, not to begrudge it, but I'd like to offer an approving resolution for you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Anybody else from the council? I seen, go ahead.
Nobody likes to see their fees adjusted, but we, we enjoyed for a long time a very, very significant rate of discount from Plant Moran that exceeded a good client discount. And I think there's tremendous value in the services you provide. I've spent, as council president, spent a lot of time. You know, I've also spent time in corporate accounting and treasury, and had a client recently who was a CPA firm. It's very, very difficult to find CPAs today. It's very difficult to find qualified CPAs. Plant Moran is, I think, has not only, not I think, has not only done a tremendous job for us, there's tremendous value in the fact that you have so much expertise in the area of government auditing. It is, it is different. It is, and private, private sector auditing is difficult, too, but the slew of regulations and rules and changes that have come our way, that you've needed to quickly interpret and guide us through, you need the expertise of dealing with government units. And if you go through your packet and the list of clients that you have, it tells the story. So I, I can't say enough about this. And again, nobody likes their fees increase, but we also understand that sometimes you get to the point where we have to pay an adjusted rate, that you have to adjust where you are, and we have to pay for the services that we value, which I think are, will continue, not I think, but I know will continue to be a good value for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, I'll just add that you've gone out of your way to provide workshops for the council and people in the city to understand municipal finances as well, and that's very appreciated, especially when we have new members and when we were new members ourselves. So I'm, I'm happy to see this relationship continuing, and I, I think I read somewhere that Mr. Slater will stay on through the period of this contract. Is that correct?
We're working on it.
That would be wonderful.
As he's hiding back there. Okay. If there's nothing else from the council, we'll go to the audience. Is there any audience comment on item number two?
Consent.
Right now, it's offered for regular. Is there any objection to putting this on consent? We will- We will put it on consent. There's no audience comment on two. We thank you all for being here, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With good news. Right? No. Thanks. Item three is a proposed modification to classifications and wage increases from civil service to approve wage rate adjustments and new classifications for part-time park and recreation employees. Ms. Liebel, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. We would like to change the proposed wages for our hourly temporary folks. They come in and they take good care of our parks and recreation division. Ted got approval from his commission to do so. The temporary employees take care of our recreation facilities, athletics, senior services, and our recreation programs, especially our aquatics. Typically, they're our summer staff or seasonal staff, so we thought that making a higher rate would help us compete in this extremely tight labor market. As you may know, these employees are not, they don't have access to benefits, so this sort of offsets the higher wage rate.
Ms. Liebel, so just because people, you are the director of civil service for the city, correct?
I am.
Okay. So this might be a good opportunity for a commercial and to, you know, tell people what the wages are. So they might be interested in, can you outline the new wage structure?
Hang on just a moment. Let me pull it up so I don't misstate any of the amounts here. Is it okay if I dial a friend for just a moment, because I don't have my glasses and I can't see this?
As long as the friend's not Ted.
It is, sorry.
Yes.
Do you want me to do it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, Councilman Jolly, this is probably the friend you were not looking forward to seeing. Ted Davis, representing the Parks and Recreation.
I'm afraid of what I'm going to say when I see you, I don't.
Department. You know, I will say, the last time we were here with wage increases, it was an across-the-board measure, right? And they, these were, these were large, big wage increases. These are far more strategic, right? We're, the biggest adjustment really we're making here is we're moving a handful of positions to different levels in our department based upon their importance to our overall operation, right? Lifeguarding continues to be a major, major position. Obviously, this year, we were able to open all three of our outdoor pools. Of course, one of them on the south end of town on a very limited schedule, and that continues to be an issue for us as we move forward. Previously, we would have normally, in a given summer, we would have hired 100 lifeguards, and we'd easily been able to, you know, staff our two indoor pools and our three outdoor pools. We're simply seeing generational changes and post-COVID changes that we weren't prepared for. Previously, college students, high school students during summers worked 30, 40 hours a week. Now we are seeing it's, they're far more transactional in their hours. It's 15 to 20 hours a week. We probably need to be full-staffed to run all of our pools, all five pools during the summer. We probably need 150-plus lifeguards. And quite honestly, I don't know where we're going to get them as we move forward. But these are, again, we made changes to adjust certain levels of positions. We also increased from 25-cent raises to 50-cent raises in year three, valuing that experience, right? A third year of any position, whether it's a camp counselor or a lifeguard, is far more valuable to us than a first-year employee. So we're trying to retain as much as attract new as well. If we're looking for specifics on this, I'm sorry, we're moving gym supervisor to level three. That's a downgrade, actually, in that position. Archery coordinator moving up to level six. Our collections manager at the Greenmead, we're moving to level seven. Camp director to level seven. This is the one that always gets everyone costume character to level eight. So if anyone in the audience is interested in being a costume character at an event, that is a level-eight position. Again, the biggest change, though, is we're going from 25-cent increase an hour for our levels two through nine positions. And then our big jump is from a step two to a step three, it's a 50-cent increase. So typically, that would be a third-year employee. I'm happy to answer any other questions council might have.
How old do you have to be to be a lifeguard?
A lifeguard, 15 years old.
Okay. Thank you. Anything from council? Can I have direction from council?
I'll move it.
Do you have an objection to that being, or this item three, actually?
For what? Approval?
Yep. Yeah. Approval, yeah.
Is there an objection to this being on consent from the council?
No, no, no.
Okay. Thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Item number four is, is there any audience comment on three? I don't see any. Item number four is a request to approve the budget adjustments for fiscal year ending November 30th of 2023 from the finance department. Good evening again, Mr. Slater.
Good evening again. As we've done in recent years, we have analyzed the status of our current budget for the fiscal year 2023, which ends at the end of this month, and identified areas where we've had favorable results, meaning revenues have exceeded what we originally projected or expensive expenses have come in lower than original projections. In your correspondence, you'll see the various areas that we're recommending, that were favorable, and then we're recommending reallocating those dollars to two different purposes. Half of those savings would go to fund our VIBA, which is our retiree healthcare fund. And then the other half would be allocated to the building improvement capital projects fund. The total is 2.5 million, so it would be $1,250,000 to each of those, each of those purposes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
This has really become almost a standard practice for us over the last five, six years, probably. I don't know if I had that exactly right, but, and it's one of the things, just from a financial discipline standpoint, that I'm most proud of with what we do. And taking this every year and putting it towards, splitting it between those two uses, I think, is really responsible and wise. And I'll offer this for approving for consent, if there's no objection.
Ms. McIntyre? Thank you, Mr. Barr.
I concur with everything Mr. Barr said. I just, there's one interesting budget adjustment in here. Several months ago, the council had suggested that we reallocate that governmental affairs position for $169,000 to another use, and council would not vote, would not, could not agree to do that. And here we are reallocating that money. So I'm happy to, happy to see it reallocated appropriately. Thank you.
If there's nothing else from council, is there any audience comment on item number four? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Slater. Are you presenting five as well?
I am.
Five is a request to approve a five-year extension with Tyler Technologies, New World, from the Department of Information Systems, for New World ERP Financial Management, Human Resource Management, and Utility Management Software from Budgeted Funds. Mr. Slater?
Yes, good evening. I'm filling in for Casey tonight, who had a conflict. This is a request to extend our current agreement with Tyler Technologies. They are the name of the firm. The name of the product is New World's ERP Enterprise Resource Platform. This is, in essence, the software that kind of runs the city. It does all of the financial accounting, the human resources payroll accounting, the water and sewer billing and collection, and everything that integrates with those. Aren't you seeing all those integrate into this one program? The proposal from Tyler Technologies is that the first year of this extension would be $131,417, and that subsequent years, each year, would not increase by more than 5% in cost. This money is budgeted, and we request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Mr. Morgan?
I'd like to offer approving and consent.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the council?
Yeah, I don't want an consent, please.
We'll put number five on the regular. Is there any audience comment on item number five? I see no audience comment. Did you have something else to say?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Mike, I know you're here filling in for Casey, but one of the things I don't see on here, who are the other? Do we, I'd really like to see a list of the other clients that Tyler Technologies has.
Who could do that?
You know, five years is a long, long extension, especially to me in technology, which is always evolving. I understand why you want a longer-term contract for ERP system, which encompasses so many of our systems, but I'd like to see some additional data on who their clients are and who the other companies are in this space, so.
Be happy to do that.
Thanks very much. And again, I know you're filling in for Casey, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with no comment from the audience, we'll move on to item number six. Thank you, Mr. Slater. Six is a request to waive the formal bidding process and authorize a purchase and installation of playground equipment through Omnia Purchasing Group from Parks and Rec for the renovation of Meese Park Playground and Play Area from Budgeted Funds. Good evening again, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Council President Jolly. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We are asking council to waive the formal bidding process and award this contract to Game Time for playground replacement at Meese Park. This equipment is 22-plus years old. It's due for replacement. We actually had requested in a previous fiscal year's budget. It was taken out. We were lucky enough to get, utilize, be able to utilize Wayne County grant monies for this. And also, we were lucky enough to receive a grant through Game Time with the State of Michigan and Parks Association that we are actually utilizing to the amount of 79, just over $79,000 for this. So we're, we feel very fortunate. This was an all-inclusive project, so the total cost for this is about $279,000, of which the city is spending $200,000 in total. We're getting reimbursed $66,000, so really, city cost is $133,000 for a $179,000 playground. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this project. If approved, the equipment is purchased this fiscal year, installation would more than likely take place during the spring, so.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Council?
Mr. Chair.
Vice President Toy.
I think, like you said, this is pretty well-needed over there, so this would be more up to date, obviously.
Yes.
20-some years old. I would ask for an approving in that area. That's right near the Jackson Center off of Linden, so I'm going to guess it'll be well-utilized as well. Approving. Yeah, all goes down. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
I always like to grant school. When we approve things with, when we waive a bidding process, and I, if people are paying attention and wondering why we waive bid processes, this is, this isn't going to a specific company, correct, Mr. Davis? This is a nationwide channel that allows us.
Yes, we're getting.
That allows us to leverage.
Different buyers, yes. We're getting the best pricing available through, as a government entity.
Made available to public entities.
Yes.
So this is, this isn't locking us into one bidder that we like. This is simply a kind of a consortium, if you will.
Yes.
It allows us to get the best prices based on the fact that we're a government entity.
Yep, and there's no, there's no, there'd be no advantage bidding this out.
Yep, yep. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any comment from the audience on item number six? Is the council okay with putting this on consent? I see no objection. We'll move on to item number seven.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you're not done yet. Item seven is an award of bid from the Department of Parks and Rec for various types of clothing for a two-year period from budgeted funds.
Thank you, Council President Jolly, again. Ted Davis, representing the Parks and Recreation Department. You can see this is a two-year contract for clothing, what we do for, whether it's staff clothing or individual programs. We go through line by line and award this to the lowest bidder for each individual item of clothing. So when we go through and ask for a bid approval on this or an approval on this, we're really awarding this to one, two, three, four, I believe, four or five different companies we are awarding part of this bid to, where we don't take this and do look at the grand total, and then we literally go line by line. So we are getting, we are asking council to approve the lowest bid on each individual item. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Now, this is always my favorite one, because it does go, it proves how procurement is serious with our Parks and Recs. They're going through line-by-line items, so kudos to you. Be happy for an offer and approving on consent.
Anything else from the council? Seeing none, is there anything from the audience on number seven? I see none. We'll move on to eight. That's a request to amend an agreement between the Charter Township of Canton and the City of Livonia for reimbursement of day-pass use of the Kirksey Recreation Center by Summit on the park, members beginning November 1 of 2023, until the project is completed. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President Jolly, again. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. If council remembers, this was brought before the council a couple of months ago. Summit on the Park is renovating their indoor pool. As a good neighbor, we allowed them to do a reimbursement program, charging them non-resident rates for their members and simply billing them afterwards. This has been a bit more successful than I believe Canton was, thought it would be, and honestly, what we thought it would be. I think, if anything, it's helped us a great deal monetarily, and then I expect us to see new members out of this as well. Canton, of course, is still in the middle of their renovation project with their pool. This has become, this has impacted their budget negatively, and they've asked us if we could continue this program, but starting November 1, instead of charging the non-resident rate for their members, simply charging the resident rate. So that's what we're here asking council to make this adjustment to the existing agreement. Instead of charging the non-resident rate of $19, charging the resident rate of $950. This is not an issue as far as our operation is concerned. It's really pretty simple for us. A Canton, Summit in the Park member checks in, we simply tally it up through our Civic Rec registration system, and at the end of the month, we send them a bill. It's simple for us, and really, we haven't seen any, it doesn't affect our operation in any significant way. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Davis, if I understand correctly, again, Canton Township will actually be paying that, not the individual residents.
Correct.
That attend, yeah. In my mind, I think it's mutual aid. I think we should be helping our partners. I'd hope that if we needed help one day, they'd be there to help us if we needed temporary relief. So I think it makes sense to, this is just a temporary thing, and again, we've experienced in times where our pools have been down and what have you, with delays in material, delays in labor, and what have you. I think this is a good thing for us to do to help out our local Western Wayne County communities. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
I'm going to withhold my question. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough?
Through the chair, Mr. Davis. Just a quick question. Since we started this with Canton, do you have a number on how many people and guests we have?
Yeah, not an exact number as of today, but we started this program in August. We're over 1,300 visits.
Okay. And then do they have any idea when the pool, they think is going to be done?
We think before the end of this calendar year.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything from the audience in regards to item number eight? I see none, so that'll be on consent.
Can we have that on the regular?
Yes.
Is there an objection to that being, you want it on the regular? Is that what you said?
Yes, please.
Okay. That'll be on the regular. Item nine is a request to consider renaming city park sites from Parks and Rec in order to recognize the Livonia Lions Club, John T. Dufour, and Ronald Ranky for their contributions to the City of Livonia.
Mr. President, Paul Byrne, your city attorney. I'm going to step down, and Mr. Goldstein is going to take my place. I have a personal interest in this, and I want to address it as a resident. So Mr. Goldstein is going to take my spot on this one.
Thank you. Are you ready to proceed, Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Davis, proceed.
Thank you, Council President Jolly. We are nearing the end of my show here this evening, and I certainly hope for the same success as I've had previously. We're asking the council to concur with the Parks and Recreation Commission in the proposed renaming of three facilities for various reasons here. I'll start first with Park Site AA, an unnamed site. This is in Section 31. It's a natural area that the Lions Club with Matt Collins and Scouts have done a number of Eagle Scout projects in there, from trail rehabilitation to invasive species removal. And they've really made that a usable site at this point, where before it was simply an overgrown area that was sparsely used, and nobody really knew about it. And they've done a fantastic job of bringing that site to life. John T. Dufour was really the first full-time superintendent of Parks and Recreation in the city. And him, along with Harry Tannajin and various mayors, they built the park system we have today. Most of the sites we have were purchased through federal monies that they were able to get and continued to build upon that, and pretty much. And pretty much every single site we have today, all of our amenities, as much as I've harassed Ron Ranky, if him and John Dufour simply played Pin the Tail on the Map and said Ice Arena and threw a dart, and there happened to be an ice arena built there, or a swimming pool, these were, these were what built neighborhoods in this community. And what, you know, John came from Dearborn, which was the envy of the Parks and Recreation world. He came here to Livonia and he did the same thing here. It's actually amazing to think that I have his job some, you know, 40, 50 years after the fact. And Ron Ranky, without Ron, we wouldn't have such things as Fox Creek Golf Course. We wouldn't have the Rec Center. The Rec Center without, would never have happened without Ron. Ron spent his entire career working towards a Recreation Center for this community. And he was able to work with, again, various mayors, Jack Kirksey being one of them, who the facility is now named after, to really get a, get a millage passed and see that dream come to life. And again, it took him 25 years and he did that. It's, it's amazing, again, the work these people have done. So again, we are asking that Park Site AA be named Lions, Livonia Lions Club Park, that Debonair Wood Park be changed to John T. Dufour Park, and the indoor auditorium at the Rec Center be changed to the Ronald R. Ranky Aquatic Center. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr.
Ted, thanks for walking through that, the history lesson and everything with it. I appreciate that. It's fascinating to hear. I don't, I don't have an issue with this, and I, in fact, I support this. My only question is on the Dufour Park, which I'm all for. And I actually got a little history lesson from Mr. Burnier today, which I have a feeling he's gonna speak to in a minute, but I didn't know John, but it was, there's no question we should have a park named after him when I hear of his significance as a community. It's just that Debonair Park, that Debonair is such a brand name within the city. And that park is so known as the Debonair area, Debonair Ice Arena, Debonair Park. I think there's a couple other areas, and when I even looked on a map, they're called Debonair. This is a small thing, but would it make sense to call that Dufour Park at Debonair, just to maintain that?
It could. I mean, the history of Debonair, there is nothing named Debonair outside of the park. The subdivision is Devonshire Woods subdivision and Bel Air subdivision. They merged those to create Debonair Park. So nothing outside of the park and the ice arena are named Debonair in and of themselves. It's Devonshire Woods subdivision, Bel Air subdivision. This is part of the history lesson that I've learned after reading more Parks and Recreation Commission minutes than I ever want to inflict upon anyone else. But those two subdivisions are what named that park. So I think, again, the Ice Arena itself, still being named Debonair Ice Arena, still holds ties that neighborhood and pays homage to those subdivisions, which were the first two built there. But I think, again, you know, John T. Woods Park, I know a lot of the family lives in that area. That was, actually, I have a great picture of, I believe it is Mayor Mulkey and John Dufour. Actually, at the groundbreaking of the, at the time, the sign said Devonshire Woods Ice Arena. And that was the site, actually, of one of the first sled hills in the city. When they built that subdivision, they took all the spoils and they created a sled hill. And I kind of think, oh, sled hill would be nice now, too. So maybe that's something we'll do.
I appreciate that context. I just, that, that may, I'm sure that's all true. And yet, you ask anybody today what the name of that neighborhood is between Merriman and Middlebelt and Plymouth and Joy, and they're gonna tell you Debonair.
Debonair.
So, I mean, over the years, it's just gonna be known as that. So I, I mean, look, I, I support this. I just thought, if it's something like Park Site AA, by all means, let's rename it.
Sure.
But something like this, I just, I thought it'd be nice to keep the Debonair name in there. So that's all. Thanks.
Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you very much for this history lesson. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I was here when John Dufour was our Parks and Rec Director. Outstanding individual, as you said, a lot wouldn't have gotten done. Him and Mac were, were just dynamos as well as him and Ron Ranky. And, you know, also throw Mike Duggan into that mix. Not that we're naming anything after Mike, but Mike really led the way, you know, on that Rec Center as well. And without those types, you know, they're just, they're, they're lost souls. I mean, we, we need to honor them in such a way. I, I hear what some of my colleagues are saying about naming. I gave pause when we named the Bentley High School to Jack Kurtsey. And while Mayor Kurtsey definitely, you know, we should have named something after him, I paused a bit because Bentley was well-known to this community since the early 50s. So, you know, a lot can be said for that, and I, I, I agree with my colleague, you know, that we gotta be cautious when we start naming things in our community because some of us that have lived here since the 50s, 60s, 70s and through, and experienced some of these wonderful folks that have served here and done such great things for our community, we want to be cautious. But in this case, I, I don't have a big problem. I think that you're doing a fine job with some of these, and I would only caution us to be a little careful because of some of the history. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. No, I think this is a great idea. Kudos to everybody involved for bringing this forward. You know, obviously, you see the history and you read about things. I've had the honor to actually go to school with the Dufours at Franklin and even Cleveland growing up. And I still remember buzzing Jake and saying, hey, you're, you know, I didn't realize how, how much of a, you know, pioneer your grandfather was in the community. And it's just incredible to see that. And what this will do is, it will, a lot of people, it will, it'll propose that question. And they'll get to learn the legacy of everything he did in this community. So I think it's incredible. I, I think the Ranky renaming is great. It, it's, it's in good taste to learn more about the history. So thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else from the council, we'll open up the floor to public comments. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
First time here in front of council, so. Paul Burnier, Livonia resident. First of all, I want to thank Ted Davis and the Rec, Parks and Recreation Commission. I think Ted, part of the reason he did is he got sick and tired of hearing me complain that we didn't have a park named after John Dufour. John Dufour is my uncle. John Dufour was a great man. I think sometimes we lose sight of the people who built this city. But for people like John Dufour, we wouldn't have what we have today. In the back, we have many of the Dufour family here. The Dufours have been involved in this city for a long time. We have grandkids, Vinnie, Mikey, and Jake, one of which actually works for our Department of Public Works. We have daughter-in-law Carol, who actually worked at the ice rinks, both ice rinks, when she was younger. We have our nephew, our niece Sue Mendon, Sue Mendel, Sue Smith here. Debbie Dufour, who probably a lot of you remember from the, from the community relations. She's now retired. She called. She was so happy to have this done. The family members are tickled with the idea that council is considering it. When we talked about it, though, the council, every, every family member I talked to was very careful to say that they did not want to displace a named park that was named after somebody already. That every, they believed everybody who had a park named after them deserved it, and they didn't want to do it. Debonair was near and dear to Big John's, Big John's heart, so that's why we thought that that would be a great, great park to name it after. Just as a little bit about John Dufour, he was a World War II veteran, combat veteran. Played for the Ottawa Rough Riders in the Canadian Football League, was my uncle. There was no, there was not a greater human being. I, when I think of him, I think of family gatherings and everybody back there, when he started singing Alouette in French, and we all had to try and keep up with him. It was, it was a great experience having him as an uncle, and he did a wonderful job for Dearborn, where I grew up, and Livonia that I live in. I think I keep following him wherever he was. I think it's, like I said, I think it's important to name things after not just the politicians, who was very important to do it, but the people who actually did work. So one day I'll be back asking to have a detention pond named after Todd Zalinsick. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else wishing to address item number nine? Anybody else from the audience? Ms. McIntyre?
I, this has been an outstanding history lesson tonight, and I'd also like to thank our city attorney for giving a very personal, yet compelling narrative about Mr. Dufour and why it's appropriate to name this park for him. And I think that added a lot to the texture of this. So thank you, Paul, for doing that.
Do we have an approving?
I'll offer an approving on consent.
Thank you very much. We have an approving on consent.
Sorry, this would need to be an ordinance change.
Oh, okay. So.
Sorry.
Is the ordinance language drafted?
Well, we could, even though Mr. Goldstein's officially here, we can, we could have, we will have, at the next meeting, we will have it drafted for a first reading for the, with the various changes of the three.
Point of order. We are taking legal advice from the audience now. This, this may be a good time to get us. Not, not that Mr. Mr. Goldstein's here and he'll probably prevent us from. Mr. McCullough, no. Okay, so that'll be on the regular and not to create the language, but rather to review their language at that time for a first read. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, you're all set.
Thank you.
Item number 10, and we are, Mr. Goldstein, we still need somebody sitting there.
I got it.
We can't be left to our own devices up here. We gotta, we need some help.
Very dangerous. Very dangerous.
Item 10 is an award of bid from Public Works Division for supplying the road maintenance section with hot and cold bituminous materials for the period of September 1, 2023, through August 31 of 2024. Mr. Moore?
Good evening. Evening, council. Doug Moore with the Department of Public Works. This is our annual bituminous materials re, request. The bids were placed in August. They were opened in September. We received the pricing from three, three suppliers, and we're asking council to approve the three suppliers. We'll go with the low bid on each item.
Mr. Chair, I'll move it because this is housekeeping. We do this every year, and I don't pronounce that name ever. So thank you, Mr. Goldstein.
Bituminous.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so just, I just Googled that word for the first time, and it means of containing or having the nature of bitumen. Whatever that is. So this is.
There it is.
Approving on the consent. Is there any communication from the audience on item number 10? Seeing none, we will move on to item number 11.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Item 11 is a request to approve the 2024 Road Repair Program from the Engineering Division as reviewed by the Citizens Advisory Committee on Roads for the second year of the 10-year paving millage approved by Livonia residents. Mr. Zalinsick, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and city council members. As you know, we do our annual repair program. We have residents and the committee come in to meet and discuss what can be fixed in the following year. This year, we have a list of 59 locations, 59 segments consisting about approximately 15 miles of roadway consisting of concrete and asphalt. We had a meeting on October 5th, and again, on October 18th, inviting the public to come and share their concerns. We had two residents show up. With that, you know, we, we believe that we're doing a good job and that most of the complaints are being accomplished through the DPW, through their repairs, and through this program itself. So, but again, we invite anybody to come out to explore any issues with their roadway to help for a city jurisdiction road to get resolved. We are looking at a budget of $10.2 million, of which 1.6 will be for our selective slab program, 4.5 million for our concrete reconstruction program, and 4.1 for our asphalt repair program. Again, 59 segments. The biggest thing I note on this year's upcoming program would be West Chicago between Harrison and Inkster. We received federal funds for that road. AEW is in the process of designing that. We're going out for bids in March. And again, we got federal funds for that particular program. Of note, I also want to let you know that there were a few segments that were delayed from this year. Bell Creek Lane, Bloomfield, Floral, and Lower Park, they will be put on first party for 2024. So with that, I'm asking your approval to, with the resolution that was provided to, to city council from the Road Advisory Committee meeting on October 18th, with a resolution that was motioned by Brett Gearack and seconded by Connie Bowdway as in your packet, and looking to spend $10.2 million in fixing our roads in 2024. In addition, there was another resolution to send to Wayne County for all their efforts throughout this year. They did approximately 14 locations that we are very excited about. They went above and beyond to fix a lot of roads. As you know, they were working on Middlebelt between 5 and 7 Mile recently and 6 Mile between Farmington and Levann. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those and appreciate everyone's efforts to make this a successful road program. Again, it'll be, next year will be our second year of the renewal millage, in which we have $10 million, or 10 years based on the August 2022 approval through the residents, 80% overwhelming approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsick. Mr. Donovan?
Thanks, Mr. President. I think it was 2022, maybe, or 2021, actually, I had asked Mr. Zalinsick about West Chicago. And with the great help of AEW and Mr. Lockwood and some of those other folks over there, it's really impressive how accurate they are. I had asked him, again, it was a couple of years ago, and he said in, in 2024, we'll be redoing West Chicago. So I really thank you guys for that. I think the residents and the city are so fortunate to have this program because you go to a lot of cities and their roads are, their local city roads are really in despair and whatnot. And Livonia, we, we take care of Livonia roads to the point where they're pretty accurate with, with the years that we're gonna do it. So I'm happy to see that this program is so successful. I don't have any questions, but I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Ms. McIntyre?
I just, I, I'm happy to see it go on consent. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Zalinsick and the, and the Road Commission, Traffic Commission, Road Commission.
Yeah.
Road Commission, Citizens Road Advisory Commission, thank you, for the great work they do. And also, just a comment that Mr. Zalinsick remarked that there were two, two citizens attended the meeting. And this is another instance where we do a good job, I think, of publicizing these meetings. People know that Livonia meetings are, like all government organizations should be, are open. And we let people know that they're welcome to come and give their input. And I know everybody's busy, but we have two people show up, and I guarantee you, we will hear in the coming year a lot of complaints from people about which roads were selected, and they will not have taken the time to have understood how the roads are selected or attended a meeting to give their input. And again, we understand everyone's busy, but we provide every opportunity for people to give input for important product, for important things like this, like allocation of road repair dollars. So thank you, and thanks again, Mr. Zalinsick, for the excellent job you do in running that commission.
Thank you. Is there any audience comment on item number 11? Seeing none, we'll move on to 12. A request to amend the engineering contract through the QBS qualification-based selection process with OHM Advisors for design engineering services for the 2024 Asphalt Road Program. That's contract 24A from the Engineering Division citing Council Resolution 336-21.
Thank you, Council President. Again, we are very pleased to have Mark Locke, project manager and from OHM in the audience this evening. He has been with us through the inception of this program since 2002. So he's seen a lot. He's built a lot of roads throughout the city, and again, we are very blessed to have him as part of this program. With that, we are looking for your approval to have OHM again design the asphalt roads. This year, we have 24 segments, of which four were previously designed, Floral Avenue, Bell Creek Lane, Bloomfield, and Lower Park Drive. Again, those are first priority this year to be completed. Looking to, again, get those designed. Since they were previously designed, OHM has reduced their overall design price 27%, and asking for your approval in the amount of $129,000 for the design for 24A program, based on $4.1 million, of which the ones are previously already designed. And we ran over budget last year and had to cut the program back, but we were able to swap out a few roads over in Alden Village and Boston Post, Beacon, and Bruce, Bruce over there as far as recipients of the bad news for Bloomfield and Bell Creek Lane, but able to maximize the contract amount up to that threshold for the 23-year program with nagel paving. So with that, looking forward to your approval. Again, Mark Locke's in the audience if you have any further questions. But again, he's been doing a superior job with the OHM team and looking forward to another successful season.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the audience on 12? Seeing none, we'll move on to 13. That is a request to amend the engineering contract through the QBS process with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick, Inc. for the 2024 Concrete Road Program, contract 24C from Engineering citing Council Resolution 336-21.
Thank you, Council President. Again, there's 23 segments that we're looking to reconstruct in 2024 program. Again, Scott Lockwood, who's the executive vice president for AEW is in the audience. He's been working on this program since 2008. So again, we. So again, we have consistency, making a successful program to select these streets, get them constructed, and then move on to the additional streets that need to be, be worked on. So with that, we're looking at approval in the amount of $193,500 based on the $4.5 million construction budget. And again, they are the current engineer working on West Chicago, Harrison to Inkster. They actually did the design without federal aid funds back in 2008. We built it in 2009 along with some water main improvements on the south side. So they get to finish the other half mile and meet Wayne County at the other end on Inkster Road, when Inkster Road is done from Joy to, to, to West Chicago. So you'll see a lot of activity. It's like we planned it that way. Once the Emerson Oaks subdivision gets completed and the Clement Circle parking lot gets redone this fall, you'll see a whole new, nice new road to be driven upon in that area. So the residents should be appreciative, not only the, the pool there, but also the new parking lot and eventually the new road. They will have to suffer through the construction when school gets out between June and September. But ultimately, a three-lane road will be constructed there and looking forward to their expertise and work along there. So if you have any further questions, be happy to answer those. But again, Scott Lockwood is here for AEW to help out in this program.
Ms. McIntyre?
I, I'd like to offer the, the approval to amend the engineering contract with AEW. They do a fantastic job. And again, Mr. Lockwood is always here and there are long days and it's a long drive for him, but he's always here as one of the senior principals at the firm. And it's appreciated and just great work, great partner. And again, Todd, you know, thank you and DPW for, I think, being good partners to our, our vendors, which is one of the reasons that we continue to have the best companies that want to work with our city. So happy to offer that. And I'd like it on consent if there are no objections.
Thank you. Is there any audience comment on 13? Seeing none, we'll move on to 14. That's a request to amend the engineering contract through QBS with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick, Inc., AEW for design engineering services for the 2024 Concrete Road Maintenance Slash Selective Slab Program, Contract 24J from Engineering, again citing the same Council Resolution 336-21. Mr. Zalinsick, you're earning your money tonight.
I can't keep up the Ted show, but I'll try to. You know what I mean? No, again, this is based on a $1.6 million contract, similar to what we just finished this year. If you're familiar, we finally got Newburgh Road done at the intersection at westbound Schoolcraft. That was a rough patch there. We couldn't do it last year because of the I-96, 275 construction there. So glad to get that done. Looking for your approval to allow AEW design the selective slab program in the amount of $84,800. They're, they're actually touching 11 different segments in the different sections and in 25 separate locations. We go out through the city, we get calls in through DPW and Engineering. Have a spreadsheet, we look at the 25 locations that we can maximize and get those areas repaired and look forward to making a big difference for residents who have maybe pounding water or issues where the street is cracked and causing an issue, to make that a better ride, a better area for, for residents that come and traverse the area on a daily basis. So with your, with your review and approval here, we'll look forward to working with AEW again to complete this and again, get it out for construction in, in spring of 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have direction, please? Mr. Morgan?
Yes, also, I would like to offer an approving on consent. They see that AEW does a great job and want to just continue that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any audience comment on 14? Seeing none, we'll move on to 15. A request for addition to the local street system for the 2024 Act 51 computations from Engineering for streets and or portions thereof newly opened in 2023.
Again, City Council just looking for your approval to add to our Act 51 map. We currently have 373.51 miles. Going to add a total of 551.94 feet. So, you know, get our fair share from the state. So that's on Josephine Court, as you know, off of Linden, one of the new developments, Grand Reserve over there. So looking forward to, again, plowing the street, taking that street over and adding to our Act 51 map, which we typically get sent in April, May, and update our maps with the new and approved mileage for that. So looking for your approval as a annual basis and hopefully, again, getting more funding from the state.
Did I just hear that you're going to plow the street over?
You don't want me plowing the street, you know, you want the DPW or our vendors, Great Lake Solutions, I think, and Stante that do that type of work.
Thank you, sir. Can I have direction, please? Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Zalinsick, this is just normal when a new neighborhood or what have you has built that new road is created. We're just adding it to the, to the roll, so to speak, right? Yeah. I'd like to offer an approving consent. There's no objection, my colleagues.
Thank you. That'll be on consent if there is no objection. Is there any comment from the audience on 15? I see none. We'll move on to the final item of the night. Item 16 is a request to prepare an ordinance limiting city mailings prior to Election Day from Councilmember Barr in order to avoid the appearance of city resources being used to benefit current elected officials during campaign seasons. Mr. Barr, I'll let you introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly. So just a recap of what I talked about a couple of weeks ago. So the, the situation that led to this was when it was learned that the publication date for the Livonia Connections magazine, which is sold out, I think last time I said quarterly. I think I've since been reminded it's three times a year. I see some nodding heads, so I think that's correct. It has city programming, update on city services, those kinds of things. It's a residential service. It's a, it's a great publication, very helpful. But it was originally slated to go out on November 15th and then was moved up to hit mailboxes, I believe, I'm going off memory now, I think, oh, here it is, November 2nd is what it, it had been said it was going to be moved to, which of course is just a few days prior to the election. And that in and of itself, I'm not sure would have caught my attention. What caught my attention was the fact that on the draft of the magazine that had been circulated, the cover included a photo that, that very much appeared to be a campaign-style photo. I mean, it's a judgment call, but I mean, that's, that's just the way it struck me. Interestingly, you know, it was a Monday night meeting that I brought this concern up. I had no idea that the following day on Tuesday that a campaign, piece of campaign literature was going to hit mailboxes for the mayor that included that exact same photo. I, I had no idea of that when I even brought this up. So this ended up even being more true of a concern than I even realized when I suggested it. So, so the reason I brought, what I was suggesting is it seems like it would be who of us is a city to have rules in place to make sure that, that publications like that aren't essentially used as campaign materials. Now, let me make something very clear. This is not about, you know, whether it's a mayor, whether it's council people, whether it's clerk or treasurer, certainly for the mayor. I mean, it's, it's understandable that the mayor's picture is used, I mean, is essentially the face of the city for a lot of things, regardless who the mayor is. That's totally understandable. That's not what the issue is. The issue here was timing. And I'm just going to, listen, I'm going to call out, it's, it's impossible to escape the politics of this, and it was even suggested last time by one of my colleagues. So let me just call it out. Yes, I've endorsed the mayor's opponent in this election. But I, I want to keep this conversation focused on the merits of the rules we can put in place. This has no bearing on this particular publication that's coming out. In fact, I see Mr. Jolly apparently has a copy of it over here. I don't know if that's hit mailboxes or if he just got one from within City Hall.
It was here when I came.
Okay. And, and I see, as I expected, and I'm, I'm glad to see this, that since our conversation that Monday, that the picture on the front has been changed and, and that's appropriate. But I, I said last time that like US Congressional rules, for example, already, they have rules in place to prohibit mass mailings like this that include pictures of elected officials from going out within 30, 60, or 90 days before an election, depending on the situation. I've since been told by our county commissioner, I haven't, I haven't verified this myself, but our county commissioner told me that Wayne County already has a rule like this in place. And if I'm not mistaken, it's, it's 30 days prior to an election that they can't send anything like that out. And not trying to get in the way of city business, I mean, we, we need to be able to do these things, but like I said, this was originally slated for November 15th, which would have been fine. And another thing that I just want to point out is that this was not, you know, I said I was just going to call the politics of it. And anybody that wants to suggest that this is politically motivated, this wasn't even on my radar on Monday morning of our meeting last time. I wasn't even thinking about this, never even considered this as an issue. The reason it became an issue is because the fact that that picture was used on the cover of this magazine made it an issue. And, and I saw that and I just said, seems like we should have rules in place to keep this from happening in the future. Just looking at my, so I, Council, I had, you know, sent you and you all have in your packets just a summary of the background and what I think the objective of this should be. I had put in some proposed ordinance language for us to consider. I'll just tell you flat out, I, I was just putting that in there to get the ball rolling. Even as I read that, I can imagine there's probably some things that I haven't thought of. And I, I just think that we should have a discussion about it. And I'm sure some of my colleagues have, have things to talk about here, but I'll even just tell you, just to declare what my intent, I think the appropriate thing for this would be to put it in committee of the whole, so council can discuss what makes sense, what doesn't. Some of you may be seeing things that I'm not seeing, but let's, let's get this right. I just think there needs to be a rule in place to make sure that elected officials are not using taxpayer-funded resources for personal gain going into an election in the future. I also recognize, look, my time in this council is limited. I'm personally, right now, trying to schedule a finance committee meeting before I get off council. I know how compressed our schedule is. I'm under no illusion that this is going to get solved during my tenure. I mean, this is something I think the next council is probably going to deal with before that we bring this up in committee. But I would offer that we put this into committee of the whole for further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks to my colleague, Mr. Barr, for bringing this up. I'm actually, I was hoping we could talk about this and, and take some action on this and not put it in committee of the whole, because I do think it is an important subject because we're talking about taxpayer dollars here. I want to preference my remarks on, I have zero issue with the mayor, the clerk, the treasurer, council members, elected officials being on the cover of a city-paid-for publication. Zero issue with that, especially when you're the mayor. You are the mayor, to Mr. Barr's remarks, when you're the mayor, if you want to put your face on the cover of a city magazine, I have zero issue with that. That's very normal, it's very common across the city for the mayor to put themselves on the, on the front cover of city-paid-for magazines. That's okay. But I think it's reasonable that elected officials should not be in city, in magazines paid for by taxpayers so close to an election. Again, to Mr. Barr's remarks, the county has rules for this, Congress has rules for this. These are bodies that generally send out mass mailings. They have a budget to send out mass mailings within their district. And they've decided that it makes sense to not allow elected officials. We get our jobs by running for office, by putting a picture of our face out there as often as possible. And that's how we keep our jobs. That's how we get reelected and whatnot. So it makes sense that elected officials should not be in publications paid for by taxpayers so close to election, whether that's 30 days or 60 days. I'm amenable to that. I just thinks, I think it makes a lot of sense that we shouldn't be putting ourselves in magazines paid for by taxpayers so close to an election. But again, I think it's 100% okay if, if elected officials are in magazines, regardless of what position that elected official may be. I just think it's common sense that we shouldn't be in magazines right before an election paid for by the taxpayers of our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the council? Can we have direction? You said it was your hope for, I didn't, I didn't take it as a question.
I said I, I'll offer it, I would offer it for committee of the whole.